Good evening. It is a pleasure to welcome you to the November 28th, 2023 School Board Meeting. It is 6:00 PM and I call to order this regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. This meeting is called pursuant to Section 1001.37 of the Florida statutes, where the superintendent acts as the chairman until the reorganization of the board has been completed. At this time, I'm going to ask for the...
You're going to do the pledge.
Yes, the presentation of colors by Flagler Palm Coast High School, JROTC. We have Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Wyatt Brown, Cadet Second Lieutenant Zoe Catrell, Cadet First Lieutenant Gillian Rivera, and Airman Prem Patel. Please rise. A moment's silence. Thank you. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Roll call.
Stanley Gadsick, present. Brendan Wong, present.
Kristi Chong, present.
Will Furry, present.
Sally Hunt.
Colleen Conklin, present.
Sharon Mossero.
LaShaka Moore.
All right, at this time, we'll recess to our reorganizational meeting. I would like to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Moore. As Ms. Mossero stated earlier, this meeting is called pursuant to Section 1001.37 Florida statutes for the purpose of organizing the school board by election of a chair and vice-chairman, chairperson. Board, you have in front of you the agenda for the reorganization meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda? If not, I will call for the motion to adopt the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Conklin, a second by Ms. Mossero. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposer, like, sign? Motions carries unanimously. According to school board policy, the board follows Robert's Rules of Order. The Flagler County School Board is required to conduct an election for the chairman for the term of November 28th, 2023 through November 19th, 2024. The board will conduct their organization meeting at this time. Section 1001.37-1 Florida statutes addresses organization of the board and Policy 202 Flagler County School Board Policy states that on the third Tuesday after the first Monday in November of each year, the school board shall organize by electing a chairman. It further states that it may elect a vice-chairman and that superintendent shall serve as the ex officio secretary. Further, it states that within two weeks after the election of a chairman, that the secretary shall file a document with the Florida Department of Education stating the chairman and vice-chairman as elected. I will accept nominations for chairman, after which the board will vote. Then I will accept nominations for the vice-chairman, followed by the vote. Nominations do not require a second. If only one person is nominated, naturally, that choice would be unanimous unless someone would like to register a dissenting vote. I will now open the floor to accept nominations for chairman of the board for the coming year. Any board member, current or new, may nominate a board member.
I nominate Dr. Colleen Conklin.
We have Ms. Sharon Mossero has nominated Dr. Conklin as chairman for the board for the 2324 year. Are there any other nominations?
I will nominate Mr. Will Furry.
We have Ms. Chong, who has nominated Mr. Furry as the board chairman for the 2324 year. Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, we will vote for the chairman for the board for the 2324 year. All those in favor of Dr. Conklin, vote yes. Those opposed will have the same side. All those in favor for Dr. Conklin as board chairman, vote now.
Yes.
We have a vote of two. I'm sorry, opposives?
I oppose.
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 Okay, so we have a vote of two to three for Dr. Conklin. All those in favor for Mr. Furry, please vote at this time.
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Oppose.
We have a vote of three, two, for Mr. Furry. Congratulations, Mr. Furry will be the chairman for the board. I will now accept nominations for vice-chairman of the board for the coming year.
I nominate Kristi Chong.
We have Mr. Furry, who has nominated Kristi Chong as the vice-chairman for the board for the 2324 year. Are there any other nominations? If no other nominations, then we will say by unanimous vote, unless someone wants to register a dissenting vote, that Ms. Chong will serve as the vice-chairman for the board. Any dissenting votes? Congratulations, Ms. Chong. You are the vice-chair for the board for the 2324 year. Not yet. Judge Disler, if you would, please come forward. Judge Disler will swear in the chairman-elect. Judge Disler will also swear in the vice-chairman.
Test.
There you go. Okay. Could you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Flagler County School Board Chair.
Flagler County School Board Chair.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I'm now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chong?
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Flagler County School Board Vice Chair.
Flagler County School Board Vice Chair.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will now have the plate signed and notarized, as well as the switching of the chairs. The next item in the organization of the board is to establish dates and times for the schedule of board action meetings for the ensuing year in accordance with School Board Policy 201. I recommend that the board approve the calendar establishing meeting dates and times for the school board regular meetings for the period of 23 through November 24, as presented, and you have those dates before you board if you want to take a moment to look at those dates. Yes, we're reviewing the dates that are before you, and it is our recommendation that you approve those dates as presented.
Is there a meeting Thanksgiving week again?
I'm pretty sure it was adjusted to be the following Tuesday. But no, it is an election year.
Yeah, it's an election year and it has to be held the second Tuesday following the election. And my memory is the election is November 8th, I believe.
The 5th.
Or 5th. And so it has to be two weeks post.
So, I just want to make sure I'm right. If it's November 5th.
Aye. Is it November 5th?
Thanksgiving's the 28th. And the meeting's the 26th. Still could be the 19th.
I thought the first Tuesday of the month is...
Oh, because you have the...
Okay. It's the first Tuesday in the month.
Got it.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Can I just, can I just look at the calendar real quick?
And we will have discussion.
Yeah, we're gonna have discussion.
We're gonna have discussion.
We just need to get it on the...
We just, we need a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Hunt. Any discussion?
Yeah, so if we can just revisit November. So I've got November 5th as the first Tuesday of November, which is, we've got the agenda workshop scheduled. So it needs to be two weeks. And so, again, election is...
November 5th, it's the same day. Can we have a meeting?
Would that be November 19th?
So, Board...
No, it's by statute. You don't, we don't have any...
It would, so...
I am, so is it two weeks from the... I guess I'm hearing that the election is November 5th. Is that not the case?
Okay, the election is November 5th.
So 5 plus 14 is 19.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. So here's the, here's what I would propose, and this is what we have done in the past. Or this past election, when you, Ms. Hunt, when Ms. Chong and Mr. Furry were elected, we actually did not hold a workshop meeting that day of the election because, two reasons. Number one, you don't know whether or not a fellow board member may be running on that day. And, you know, at this time, I know they've indicated they are not running, but they may be running. And so out of courtesy, we have never held a board meeting when it's a day of an election so that they would be able to campaign during that time. So my proposal to you would be that you have your 3 o'clock workshop. It also affords those newly elected members to attend that information workshop, just like you did, even though they won't be sworn in yet.
Yeah.
So the proposal that I would like to make would be that that November 5 meeting be changed to November 12. And what it means, though, Board, is, and Ms. Hunt, you are correct, the two weeks post would be November 19th. It does mean you're gonna have back-to-back weeks of meetings. So November 5, or I'm sorry, November 12 would be your working agenda workshop. And then seven days later, November 19, you would have your reorganization meeting and you would have your placement of your officers, because that's two weeks post the election.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
So all three of those dates will be changing for November?
So the...
The 12th and then 19th.
Yes, the information workshop at 1 o'clock. And again, the 1 o'clock meeting, those two new board members would be sitting in the audience for that information workshop, but they would be able to hear whatever is being presented during that day. And then that night, they would be seated on the dais. And so that would be what I would propose, is shifting your working agenda meeting to one week later and your... It will mean that the district has to do a fast turnaround on getting those meetings posted that night. But it's no different than tonight, we will be going live with the December meeting.
But just to summarize, because Kristi asked, so it will not be Thanksgiving?
No, ma'am. It'll be November 19th.
Can we also adjust the July 2nd? I know this past year, the week of 4th of July, we did not, we canceled, we did not have that meeting.
We can, again, if you're looking at November. And so, or July, rather, I apologize. So your July meeting, you could do it. And again, it would be back-to-back meetings if you did it July 9. You...
It'd be after the regular meeting.
Because you absolutely do have that flexibility if you wanted to do two weeks in between. You don't have to do it back-to-back if you don't want to. You could do it July 9 and July 23rd.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that makes sense. If everybody's okay with that. July 9th and 23rd.
Are there any other changes with respect to anything that you're aware of regarding graduations or anything around May 21st? I don't believe so. I think we took that into consideration.
The only thing I would ask is, did the team take into consideration the spring break for...
That we did do.
For staff? Okay, good.
Yes.
So I'd like to amend my motion to include the changes for July 9th and July 20, from July 2nd to July 9th, from July 16th. Is that 16 or 19?
It's 16.
Yeah, 16. I scratched it out already. To the 23rd for the informational workshop and July 16th for the regular meeting to July 23rd. Also move the November 5th meeting to November 12th for the agenda workshop. The November 26th meeting to the 19th for the information workshop. And the November 26th meeting for the regular meeting to the 19th. I think those are all the changes. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion from Dr. Conklin, a second from Ms. Hunt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposers? It moves unanimously, is approved unanimously. The next item in the organization of the board is to establish the board liaisons and establish the FSBA director and alternate for the FSBA meetings. Board, you have before you last year's list of board liaisons. At this time, we will go through last year's assignments and determine if you wish to continue the liaison for that committee or organization or whether there needs to be change at the conclusion of the list. I will call for a motion. Does everyone have your copy?
I do not. I know, but I didn't get one. Here. Okay. I got one. Oh, good.
I will call out the different organizations. So we have Biltier Elementary School, we have Mr. Furry.
Yeah, I'll keep that. There's no objection.
Banell Elementary School.
I'll keep that.
Oak Kings Elementary School.
I'll keep that one as well.
Rimfire Elementary School.
I'm happy to keep that.
Wadsworth Elementary School.
That was changed to me, but I would like to relinquish that.
Do we have...
I could take it.
We have Ms. Chong for Wadsworth Elementary School. Ladies Haylor Middle School, we have Ms. Chong.
I'll keep that.
Indian Trails Middle School.
Yes, I'll keep that.
Flagler Palm Coast High School, we have Ms., Dr. Conklin.
I'd like to keep that.
Matanzas High School, we have Ms. Mossero.
I'll keep it.
Flagler Technical College, we have Ms. Mossero.
I'll keep it.
Imagine School Town Center, we have Dr. Conklin. Legislative Liaison, we have Dr. Conklin with an alternate of Ms. Hunt.
Being that I'm the state legislative chair for Florida School Board Association, if somebody else wants to step up and take that position, that's great.
And I also am happy to step aside as the alternative if someone else has an interest.
I'm open to either one, especially I am gonna be going to Tallahassee next year and just something I'd like to learn more about.
You'd like to serve that I can do the alternate?
Great. Good.
Okay, so we have Ms. Chong and Mr. Furry as the alternate. Flagler County Education Foundation, we have Dr. Conklin.
That's fine.
Flagler County Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Furry.
Yeah, I'll keep that.
Value Adjusted, Adjustment Board, we have Mr. Furry.
I can do that again.
Auditorium Governing Board, Ms. Mossero.
Yes.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. Auditorium Governing Board.
Has to be the chair.
That has to be the chair.
Oh, it has to be the chair.
Okay.
Sorry. Nope, good catch.
Good catch. Mr. Furry, Auditorium Governing Board. Department of Juvenile Justice, we have Dr. Conklin with an alternate of Ms. Hunt.
That's fine with me.
I'm fine to stay. I'm also fine to, if someone else would prefer to be the alternate.
African-American Mentor Program, we have Dr. Conklin with an alternate of Mr. Furry.
I'd like to keep that.
Myself, too.
Okay. School Health Advisory Council, we have Ms. Chong.
I'd like to keep that.
GW Carver Governance Board, we have Ms. Hunt.
I would be interested in that.
Yep, I'm happy to have you be the liaison.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have Ms. Mossero. Small School District Council Consortium, we have Dr. Conklin with an alternate of Ms. Mossero.
I'm fine.
I would like not to do that.
I'm gonna be at the meeting, so...
Okay, so we have Dr. Conklin alone. Coalition of Student Success, Dr. Conklin.
Is that still active or are we sunsetting that? Okay, if we're still doing it, I'm happy to do it. But if we're not, then we probably need to sunset it and just delete it from the list.
My recommendation would be that it be deleted.
I would agree. Okay. Unless, if it, if it's revived, I'm happy to do it.
Okay. District ESC Advisory Council, we have Mr. Furry.
Yes, I'll keep that.
Community Traffic Safety Team, we have Ms. Chong.
I'll offer that up, just, it's not hard, but see if anybody else wants it.
I'm happy to take it.
Okay, Ms. Hunt. Oversight Committee, we have Ms. Mossero with an alternate of Dr. Conk... I'm sorry. We have Ms. Mossero, Dr. Conklin, and Ms. Hunt.
I'd like to give that up.
I'd like to keep that.
That's another one, Superintendent Moore, that if another board member wants that spot. It's a, it's a really important group, talking about ILA. And so, anyway, I'm happy to remain. I'm also happy to have someone else have that spot.
I'll take one of the places for that.
Okay, so we have Mr. Furry, we have Ms. Mossero coming off, Mr. Furry going on. Dr. Conklin.
Do we have to have three?
Yes.
We have to have three?
Yes.
Yep, I'm happy to continue.
You'll stay?
Mm-hmm.
So that is Mr. Furry, Dr. Conklin, and Ms. Hunt. Boys and Girls Club, we have Dr. Conklin.
On their board, I'll stay.
Focus on Flagler Youth Coalition, we have Ms. Mossero.
Yep.
Florida Tobacco Prevention Partnership, we have Ms. Mossero.
Yes.
Flagler Historical Society, we have Dr. Conklin.
Sure. Before we move on, I do, up for the Flagler County Ed Foundation, I believe their bylaws also calls for the chair. So, so Will, you'll, you'll take that one.
Which room is that, I'm sorry?
Flagler County Ed Foundation.
Okay, yep.
Superintendent Moore, can you go over the responsibilities that are associated with serving as liaisons prior to closing this?
So these, the individual that serves as a liaison will attend the established meetings for the school or organization that they are assigned to and report back to the board on anything from that organization or school.
Good, thank you. Could I, could I ask a question? Or I guess have a request? If we could have somebody call each of the entities and get, make sure that we've got the meeting times correct? Because I know some of them have changed.
So I'll have Lorraine reach out to all of the entities.
That would be great.
To confirm dates and times. And then, instead of sending a blast to everyone, it'll go to whatever you're assigned or placed as an alternate. it'll go to whatever you're assigned or placed as an alternate. It'll be your assignments. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, board members, we have gone through the list of school board liaisons. Is there a motion to approve? Prove.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Masero, a second by Ms. Chong. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposers? Motion carries unanimously. Board, at this time, we need to select the FSBA Director and Alternate. Currently, Dr. Conklin is serving as the Director and Ms. Masero is the Alternate. Are you both willing to continue to serve in these positions? Or is there interest of other board members to serve in this position?
If there's interest of other board members, again, serving as the Chair for the... I'm going to be there anyway, so if somebody else wants to be either the Director or on the Advocacy Committee, I'm fine with that.
And I'm fine if somebody else steps in, too.
I mean, if nobody wants to do it, I'll...
We'll do it.
All right, I'll do it.
All right. Board, we have Dr. Conklin, who will serve as the Director, and Ms. Masero is the Alternate. I will call for a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Chong, a second by Ms. Hunt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposers? It moves unanimous. All right, board, at this time, we need to select the FSBA Advocacy Committee Member and Alternate. Currently, Ms. Hunt is serving as the Committee Member and Mr. Furry is the Alternate. Are you both willing to continue to serve in these positions? Or is there interest of the board members, other board members, for these positions?
I'm happy to serve as the alternate if somebody else would like to take the lead on that.
Okay, and for the primary position, what is the engagement with the FSBA for the advocacy on that one there?
Well, Sally was on the committee this year. She could probably tell you.
Could you tell me? Do you know?
To be honest, Will, I don't quite have all of those full details right now, which is one of the reasons I'm happy to be the alternate.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll...
Basically, what you'll do is they work on an advocacy plan for not just the district, but the statewide. They'll recommend actions and things you can do back home in your community for advocating for public education. So it's a pretty, it's a good group. It's a great, great group.
Great. I'll take that one, then.
So we have, Mr. Furry will serve as the Committee Member with Ms. Hunt as the Alternate. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Masero, a second by Ms. Chong. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will now turn the meeting over to the new Chairman of the Board, Mr. Furry.
Okay, I need a motion to close the reorganization meeting and convene the School Board Leasing Corporation meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, I will now call for a motion. So, board members, if there's a motion to close the reorganization meeting?
Motion to close. Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and seconded by Chair Masaro. Any discussion?
Just Cheryl. Just Ms. Masero.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gotta break that habit. Gotta get used to that now.
It's all right.
Cheryl, Masaro. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order for the Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation and will turn this meeting over to the past President of the Leasing Corporation, Cheryl Masaro.
Where is it? Do I have a script? Cheryl, do you have this? I have that, yes. But I don't know if she wants me to read anything. This is what I'm reading. Thank you. Okay, outgoing, as outgoing President of Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation, I'd like to call this November 28, 2023, meeting to order. The time is 6:36 PM. This evening's agenda includes public comment and election of officers and other business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Move approval. I need a second? Second. I have a motion by Dr. Conklin and a second by Ms. Chong. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Public comment. We'll now take public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board regarding any actions proposed to be taken by the Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation?
Past President Masaro, there are no public comments at this time that have been logged in. However, if there is any member in the audience that didn't realize this was a separate public comment time, you can come forward now.
All right, seeing none, I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Moore for her recommendations of the new officers for the Leasing Corporation and any other housekeeping matters.
Board members, at this time, I submit to you for your consideration my recommendations for approval of the organization resolution of the Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers. The Director's names in the articles of incorporation of Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation, the corporation, a not-for-profit corporation organized and existing under the laws of the state of Florida and voting in favor hereof, do hereby resolve that the following persons shall serve as the officers of the corporation until removed by the Directors or until their successors shall be duly elected and qualified. President will be Mr. Will Furry. Vice President will be Ms. Kristi Chong. Secretary, LaShaka Moore. Treasurer, Patty Warmick. Each of the President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurers are authorized to open bank accounts on behalf of the corporation, if necessary, and to execute any and all documents, contracts, instruments, and certificates, and to take all actions and steps on behalf of the corporation as may be necessary or desirable to complete transactions as authorized by the Board of Directors.
You have heard the Secretary's recommendation for the officers of approval of the organization resolution of the Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation for the election of officers and other corporate housekeeping matters. Is there a motion to approve? Move approval. A second? Okay, I have a motion by Kristi Chong and a second by Dr. Conklin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Chair Furry.
The action contained herein shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Voting for the adoption of the foregoing resolutions were Directors Colleen Conklin, Kristi Chong, Will Furry, Sally Hunt, Cheryl Masero. Voting against the adoption of foregoing resolutions for were Directors, none, adopted the 28th day of November, 2023. I LaShaka Moore, the duly appointed, qualified, and acting Secretary of the Flagler County School Board Leasing Corporation, a not-for-profit corporation organized and existing under the laws of the state of Florida, do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of the organizational resolution for the election of officers of the corporation. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and affix the corporation's seal of the corporation this 28th day of November, 2023, with my signature. Board, you have before you the minutes from the November 22, 2022, Flagler County Board Leasing Corporation Business Meeting, and at this time, I submit them to you for your consideration and approval.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Seeing that there's no changes, the minutes stand as presented. Other business. Superintendent, is there any other business to come before the board?
There is no other business to come before the board.
Directors, do you have any business for consideration? Okay, seeing that there's none, at this point, having no other business to come before the body, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're going to call together the Tuesday, November 28, School Board Regular Business Meeting. We've already, we're going to... We've already done roll call and Pledge of Allegiance, so we're going to move right ahead to the agenda items. Moving to four, we have Proclamations and Resolutions and Legislative Updates. We don't have any. Okay, so we're going to move to 4.02. Special Education Day Presenter, Kim Holliday.
Good evening, Chair Furry, Ms. Moore, and Board. We are here together to share with you a resolution for National Special Education Day, which will be December 2nd, and together we're going to read this proclamation.
Are you guys willing to read?
Perfect. We all read, we all read well. Whereas, December 2nd is recognized as National Special Education Day, this day celebrates the 53rd anniversary of the nation's first special education law as the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, was signed on December 2nd, 1972, and...
Whereas, the IDEA law makes a free, appropriate, public education, FAPE, available to eligible children with disabilities throughout the nation, and ensures special education and other related services be made available to the students, and...
Whereas, IDEA governs how states and public agencies provide early interventions, special education, and related services to infants, toddlers, children, and youth with disabilities, and...
Whereas, Flagler Schools states that special education services were provided to 2,229 individuals, newborn through 22 years of age, and...
Whereas, thanks to IDEA, many of these students can meet their full potential, but no system is perfect. Many students are still in need of special interventions or supports, and...
Whereas, special education in America is a work in progress. It is changed bit by bit through the hard work of students, families, educators, advocates, and lawmakers, as well as entire communities, and...
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that Flagler Schools recognizes December 2nd, 2023, as National Special Education Day.
Adopted by the members of Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at a regular, open, public meeting, therefore held on the 28th day of November, 2023.
I just want to share with you also that what I, who I've joined with me today. One is Ms. Sue Haven, who, when I started in Flagler Schools, she was someone I looked up to very, very much, beginning, and we did Special Olympics together and really did quite a bit together to support students with disabilities. So I'm very honored that she decided to come and speak with me tonight. And we also have two very, very important parent advocates with me tonight, Ms. Erica and Eddie, who work tirelessly to make sure that cooperatively Flagler County Schools and our families work to support our students with disabilities. So I just wanted to thank them for joining me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all for speaking, and I know you guys do a lot for special education. I really appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to Spotlight. Superintendent, Strategic Plan Spotlight. Do you have anything, Superintendent Moore?
I would ask that I go after Ms. Rizzo, as I want to join my spotlight with that of our recognition of our Veterans Day presenters.
Okay, we will move that, and Flagler County Education Foundation Spotlight, Ms. Rizzo.
Good evening, Board, Chairman, and Superintendent. Congratulations, and thank you for your previous service, especially Chairman Masaro, previous Chairman Masaro, for giving us this opportunity to spotlight the Education Foundation. That was because of you, so thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us to share with you in the public some wonderful things that are happening in Flagler County for our students, our educators, and our families. Beaver Toyota Fund of Project teacher grants were given out on October 19th. We were honored to give out over $70,000 to 45 teachers in each of our nine brick-and-mortar schools, also I Flagler, and Imagine for the first time ever. This is possible because Beaver Toyota of St. Augustine matches funds with the Florida Consortium of Education Foundations. To provide these opportunities to enhance the educational environment, four over 10,000 students will be impacted in Flagler County. We want to give a great big thank you to Beaver Toyota for continuing to wow us here in Flagler County. Our Josh Cruz Gala was, took place on Friday, November 17th. The Education Foundation hosted the Josh Cruz Gala to fundraise and bring awareness to the Josh Cruz Writing Project in each of our 10 schools. The theme this year was Charlie and the Chocolate Factory by Roald Dahl. We, the board and the team are beyond grateful to announce that we, because of our sponsors, we were able to raise $45,000 for the writing club. We have over 200 students involved in this club. They will be published authors this year. They will be able to launch their book on April 17th, and we will have a signing party for them at Buddy Taylor Middle School. We hope that you all will join us to see the accomplishments of these young writers. Also, our senior scholarship platform opened on November 20th. It is open for all local seniors in Flagler County. We have over 70 local businesses that donate over $300,000 for our seniors here in Flagler County. So there's a hard closed deadline for January 5th, so make sure you share with all your seniors to get on the platform, flagleredfoundation.org to be able to apply for those scholarships. We already have 90 students who are currently applying. Last but not least is our Well Read Wanderers. This is a literacy event hosted by the Flagler County Education Foundation and the Florida Department of Education's New Worlds Reading Program. The New Worlds Reading Program delivers books monthly to students VPK through 5th grade. This is to help fam, this... This is to help fam, this Well Read Wanderers program is to help families sign up to be able to get those books delivered to their house. So we will be having this event on December 9th at the MIP. The new MIP location is at 3389 North State Boulevard in Bonnell. It is from 11 to 1:00 p.m. It's a free event. They will receive a book. There will be a cookie decorating activity, and lunch will also be provided. Parents will also receive a literacy educational workshop to help their students learn to read at home. So we are grateful for all of the great things happening, and thank you for your time and service to Flagler County.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzo.
Thank you, Teresa.
I wanna piggyback on some of the work that we've been doing in partnership with the Education Foundation, is really focusing on showcasing our schools to our communities. Over the last month, we have hosted several tours of our schools, and we are committed to host at least one tour a month that invites our business community, our families into our school in a structured tour. And so we have another tour coming up, and it's, it's an opportunity to really showcase the great things that are happening in Flagler Schools. And that was something we really focused on prior to COVID, and we want to get back to that, so that our community is aware and can see firsthand what is happening in our schools. If you have not had an opportunity to do a tour, you wanna come and be a part of that, especially if you're a community member, where you don't have children engaged in the schools, you wanna come and be a part of those tours, so that you can see firsthand the great things that are happening. We also had the privilege of hosting vets in the classroom, and I wanna take a moment to just really highlight Doug Glasgow, and I don't know if he's here today. He also helped to get the parade organized and to recognize our veterans that work here for Flagler County Schools. And we're gonna take a moment, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Amy Ferrer to come as we get ready to highlight the vets who gave of their time to come and present to our students. And I had the privilege of sitting through several presentations, and I will tell you, each one, I learned more and more. So thank you so much to our amazing veterans that gave of their time to come and present to our students, and we'll ask Ms. Amy Ferrer to come forward. With Mr. Marcus St. Felipe.
Good evening Chair, Board, Superintendent. I would like to thank you for the opportunity tonight, as we take time to acknowledge and thank the veterans who recently presented in Flagler Schools about the significance of Veterans Day. First and foremost, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to the veterans who took the time to join us and speak to our students. Your presence has enriched the educational experience of our students, providing them with a firsthand account of the sacrifices made by the brave men and women who have served our nation. As we reflect on the significance of Veterans Day, we recognize that it goes beyond a mere observance on a calendar. It is a day to honor and pay tribute to those who have selflessly defended the principles of freedom, democracy, and justice. Your willingness to engage with our students in this meaningful way has not only fostered a deeper understanding of history, but has also instilled a sense of responsibility. Through your stories, you have highlighted the importance of gratitude, respect, and an ongoing commitment to supporting those who have served our nation. To the teachers and administrators at each school who encourage this engagement, thank you for recognizing the value of bringing veterans onto our school campuses. A special thank you to our media specialists for your organization and the time spent to ensure that these presentations would occur on your campus. During October and November, approximately 2,200 students across seven campuses were given the experience to, opportunity to experience these presentations. In closing, I would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude once again to the veterans who shared their time, stories, and wisdom with us. Your presence has left an impact on our students, and we are truly grateful for the sacrifices you have made for the sake of our freedom. Please join me in recognizing these veterans. Veterans, please come up to the front when your name is called, and stay for a photo. Lieutenant Colonel Billy Jones. Lieutenant Colonel Mike Connors. Lieutenant Colonel Chaplain Harry Gilman. Chaplain Gilman also spoke to our students at Civic Summer Camp this summer. Colonel Cecil Hengelveld. Sergeant 1st Class Scarlett Martinez. And I think we had a first this year. We had a student speaker, Chief Master Sergeant Cadet Amaya Arteta from the Civil Air Patrol. FPC teacher, Petty Officer 2nd Class Joe Bizizaro. I don't know if he's here. Oh, there he is. And last but not least, this would not be possible without Mr. David Lyden from the Office of Veterans Affairs.
On behalf of the Flagler County Veteran Services, the Flagler County Veterans Advisory Council, I thank the school for reinvigorating this program this year, and I thank all the veterans again, as you did, for participating in this, because it is very important. So, thanks again, Superintendent.
That was good.
Thank you.
Oh, is this yours?
Okay, so now we're gonna be moving on to approval of minutes, 6.01 through 6.04. I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of agenda. Are there any additions, changes to the agenda?
I have none.
We are now gonna call for a public comment.
Chair Fury, your first speaker for this evening is Elizabeth Diaz. Oh, whoops, no, sorry, sorry Liz, my bad. Wow, I have a lot of not applicable's. So, Chair Fury, all of the public comments are not related to a direct agenda item.
Okay.
And so, I will let you know, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 public comments that are registered.
Okay, so we'll move those to the end of the meeting. And most of these here are consent, so this should move pretty swiftly. Just to remind the public that we do workshop these items ahead of time, so if it seems like we're moving quickly through, then we've already discussed these items beforehand. So, starting with 9.01 through...
1304.
13, sorry, 1304. I need a motion to approve these consent items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Superintendent Consent.
Next agenda item will be 1601.
Okay, sorry, there is nothing for those there.
Resources and Support Action, sir.
Gotcha. Resources and Support Action. Request for Letter of Interest for School Board Attorney, presenter Chris Colera.
One more time. You can come to the middle podium.
Test us, one.
Okay. Good evening Chair Fury, Board members, Superintendent Moore. I'm here tonight to request approval for the letters of interest for the School Board Attorney. Presented prior at our workshop was a draft solicitation that outlined basically requirements, scope of services that would be expected from firms, and submittal requirements, in hopes that we would obtain some interest from some firms for you to review and potentially seek to enter into a contract with. A tentative schedule has been provided in the, in the draft, and based on the schedule that's in, identified, approval of the firm would be presented at the February Board Meeting.
Okay, motion to approve the letter of interest for the School Board Attorney?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could you verify now the total timeframe? You said we'll get this out when?
In the document, I have that this would be issued in two days, on Thursday. It would be broadcast out. It would go out in the newspaper, our legal advertisement, on December 6th. Deadline for written questions would be December 18th. Response to those questions would be the 22nd, and submittals will be due on January 4th. Following that, I would put together the documentation, what was received on January 4th, they are sealed submittals. I would open them, package them together for you, give you time to review. We'll set a date for the board to come together to review them. You'd rank them, how you deem necessary, what you'd like, who, from that, we would then decide if you want to do presentations with the firms, bring those firms in, they would present to you, we would provide some topics of what you would want them to see, and you kind of go from there, and, and then again, rank them. Usually, you'd enter into, you know, negotiations with your, your top-ranked firm, and so that would happen during the month of January, so we would move to contract in February. Approval of a contract.
We've been, we're gonna have an update on the mutual agreement that we've been working on soon, which, Ms. Moore, but at this time, I would like to introduce something we just just actually discussed yesterday. A little different, it's a little different than this, this, but still, it might save us some money, but provide the necessary coverage for the three board members that are concerned. What we discussed was the potential of similar, instead of hiring an outright firm for our school board, totally, we discussed the possibility of hiring someone to be on call, or basically retain monthly at a flat rate, approximately $2,000 a month, to be at, the three board members or any of us beck and call, should they need some explanations or clarifications to get us to where we need to be and not have to expend any lump sums of money. And that's what I'm looking at financially. So, basically, they would be at your disposal for whatever needs the school board members would want, on an hourly rate, after they would expire, I don't know, 10 hours, 20 hours, whatever we would negotiate, a little different than what we have here. So we're really thinking outside the box here, as far as trying to get, what I'm trying to do is come up with, what's trying to do is come up with something that's gonna satisfy everybody's needs. Perhaps we don't need a separate district attorney at this time, and we don't need a separate school board attorney, we can somehow kind of blend it a little bit, where they both do the jobs that we need to be done, and not cost us a tremendous amount of money. So it's just a proposal. So that's what we were discussing, and I think this is a good time to bring that up, because this would be for hiring a, a separate school board attorney, as well as a district attorney, requiring job descriptions. And that's another process that takes time. So, that's up for discussion.
The, any other, any other discussion?
So I just, just for clarification, I just wanna make sure I've got it right. So you're, the recommendation, you're recommending going through this process, but looking at hiring someone on an hourly basis, so that board members who want to have something vetted or reviewed, they can utilize that service? Oh, I'm not recommending anything. I'm putting this on the floor for discussion, first of all, okay? Either way, yeah. Yes, and, no, it would be, you would actually, you would actually hire someone, but it would only be for 10 hours of service a month, or 20, per, you know, we flat rate about $2,000, it runs around $200 for an attorney, maybe 250, depending on how many... It runs around $200 for an attorney, maybe 250, depending on how many hours you would need them. And they could, they can fill in wherever was necessary to help, help the board members, should they have any questions, or they need things resolved, or they didn't understand something. The two of them, I mean, they could also, if they wanted to work with Ms. Gavin, if they needed to, I guess they could have communications, I don't know. I'm just throwing this out as a possibility to try to avoid any future litigation against us, or any out, I mean, even if we proceed with termination, we're looking at what, 100, at this time, close to 145, 150,000 dollars, we're gonna have to come up with immediately. And, I mean, I'm just trying to save money somehow, some way, because we know our financial situation is not the strongest at the moment. We gotta get back on track, and we will. So, that's what I, and we just, we just discussed this yesterday. So, it's like, just, it just hit me as a thought, and I said, "Well, I'm gonna introduce it as a possibility." Instead of going all out, maybe there's a wiggle room there somewhere.
Are you saying to do this instead of what she's proposing, or is this a separate time period?
Well, it could be, it could save us money, yeah. What we're, what we were talking about, what we always talked about with this proposal, was to hire a complete separate firm to represent all school board, right? That's what this letter's for, this is for. All school board needs. And then we would have, excuse me, an attorney, Ms. Gavin would go over and, you know, with Ms. Moore's approval, do all district legal needs. And I'm saying, maybe we can not go full boat into, you know, litigation with an attorney, and still be able to provide the support that is necessary to make you feel comfortable. That's what I'm trying to say.
I feel like I need more time to understand and...
Yeah, and I, and I get it, I get, that's why I'm not recommending anything. I just want you to think about it, to see if it's something that is feasible. Ms. Moore, myself, thought it's a possibility. We didn't say yea, nay, we thought, oh, that's another, we didn't think about it, it's just outside the box. And I'm trying to give you some suggestions that, in the future, could save us. So, I'm not saying not to proceed with what you're doing, and I'm sure we can vote to approve that, but I'm saying this is another possibility, that's all.
I would, God, I am so sorry. Cheryl, I, in the year that I have served, I have not found the need for a full-time attorney. It is every once in a while, needing to seek guidance. And I think the bulk of the district's needs for legal counsel would fall under operations. And so, I would agree that we should pay for the least amount needed to properly serve the board. I don't know, from a perspective of statute or requirements, do we have to have an attorney in chambers? You know, can they be here not at all? Can they be here virtually? Can they be on, available by text if a question arises? So, I will tell you, I am, I at least am one vote in favor of the minimum necessary legal support. I don't know, Chris, where that leaves us.
I think ultimately, by putting this out, it's going to show interest only, okay? It does, you know, it would ask for some requirements for them, for them to attend school board meetings and things like that. It was, it may not be a 40-hour-a-week position, of course. There's a lot in my research, and when I was putting this together, there are some that have them on retainer. The fee schedule in here does say that, you know, compensation, a fee schedule shall be submitted, you know, that should include, but it's not limited to, an hourly rate option, a monthly retainer fee option, or a combination of these options, or any alternate approve, alternate fee proposals. But the hourly rate option is mandatory. So, I think what you would find in putting this out is, just to see what's out there, what you can get, and what, showing interest that wants to potentially work with us. I think in negotiations, that's where it would fall down to, okay, if you have a monthly retainer option, how many hours does that include? They are going to propose that to you. So, I think it doesn't hurt by putting this out at all, 'cause I think then you're going to see potentially what's out there in front of you, and the different options. You can always negotiate. You can choose to not move forward, once, you know, that's gonna be, but you won't know what's maybe out there completely until you do something of this nature.
And I agree, 100%. I'm not saying we don't do this.
Sure.
I'm saying we move forward and do this. I just want you to think about, we've been really working hard to get to where we wanna get, and try to satisfy everybody's needs. So, by all means, we need to move forward. I just want you to think, think about this possibility. It doesn't, there's no decisions here.
Sure.
I think for right now, let's just move forward with Ms. Colera, and think about this more.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so, we'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Colera.
Thank you.
Oh, you're up, okay.
I'm up, yes.
Stay right there. All right, Technology and Innovation Action. Board Approval and Award of Contract for Innovation to Bid ITB 2405B E-Rate Category, Two Broadband Internal Connection Components. Presenter Ryan Deesing and Chris Colera.
Unfortunately, Ryan is not here this evening. At the workshop, it was presented that this is an award to four different companies for the, what they call a network refresh, of replacement of all equipment. This is being funded with E-Rate funds, where our calculation is at about 80%. The total of the contracts comes to 1.6 million, 1,683,405.85, although our portion at this time would only be 80% of that, at 336,681.17. This would be a contract for, the items would be purchased and installed over the next two E-Rate funding years, and I believe we were doing a contract that would be about five years out.
Well, and that be that.
Okay.
So, we are looking for the approval to award contracts to those four companies.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman asks for five minutes before we move on.
Five-minute recess? Okay, we will recess for five minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
So close.
Resume the meeting. And we have, we're gonna call Mr. Bush for the FPL easement.
Good evening Chair Furry, Board Superintendent Moore.
Where'd the wig go?
It got itchy. It's taking a rest back there. I'm presenting the approval for the FPL easement that we discussed this afternoon in our workshop. This is a given easement for FPL for the Metansus addition of the new transformer.
I'll make a motion that we pass the FPL easement at Metansus High School for construction purposes.
Second?
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to 21.01, update on mutual agreement.
As Ms. Masaro stated, we have met once, we have not yet come to a mutual agreement, we do have another meeting scheduled.
Are there any other updates on that meeting as far as where?
Well, we actually have met twice, you probably forgot the first one.
Yes, I'm sorry, we did, we met once to establish dates, we met once to actually discuss some opportunities that we have, and we have another meeting scheduled, I wanna say it's next week, but I will, I can pull up the exact date.
We're working on it. I know Ms. Chong is pressuring to get it done by the end of December, and we're trying, so we haven't forgotten. It's just we're waiting on, like I said, job descriptions have to be written, and that's part of the process. And we also had Shuts &amp; Bowen at one of our meetings, they zoomed in, like he called in, I guess he called in, and we had them there for one of our meetings, so it's in progress, we're getting there. As I said, this new idea just came up yesterday, so you can see we're trying to come up with the right solution for the district.
Well, just out of curiosity, is Chair Furry now gonna resume?
Yeah, it's a good question, thank you.
Resume?
Resume, I resume the meeting.
No, no, no. This negotiation.
Yeah, so Cheryl was serving as chair in the mutual agreement conversation, and so I asked the question, Chair Furry, if that would now, you would now be involved in those meetings in that capacity?
At this point, I believe that that would have to be the case based on the way that we structured it.
Yes, here's, the only concern that I have is the fact of a conflict of interest, since you've already made your position pretty clear upfront.
That is true.
So that...
I guess I don't see that as a conflict of interest is, because I believe Cheryl, you made your opinion, right?
I'm trying to negotiate for the district.
Well, and I, and I guess I would think that Mr. Furry, Chair Furry would...
He was pretty adamant in his opinion on the whole thing. I think because Ms. Masaro has already started, if you bring another person into it, I think you're gonna have to start all over again.
I just wanna clarify, can I clarify and go back to our last meeting, that whether or not there is an agreement, this contract for our attorney ends December 31st, and we all did agree on that. If that's not clear, then we need to remotion.
Yeah, I don't think there was a motion made to that effect. Yes, there was.
Can we go, yeah, can we go back to the minutes, because it's my understanding that there was a motion.
It was something like, it was something like that, but the problem that, that I'm concerned about, well, I think there'll be something that will be worked out prior to that, so I'm not gonna, I don't think we should stress about it. My concern would be if, if we do that, if we get to that point, we do need legal representation.
Right.
I mean, the district needs legal representation. So I don't think we're at that point, we might have to discuss this in December, but hopefully there's something that is agreed upon and put before us. Because the, I mean, the bottom line is, we just heard tonight even from the RFP, we're not gonna have representation.
So I think we need to be clear, and the motion is that, the motion is that our attorney's contract will be ending December 31st, whether or not there's an agreement, and after that, if they want to continue negotiations, that could be done.
That, Kristy, that is my understanding.
I would like to see the motion, we have it, so we'll have to get the minutes.
That was a contingent, see, for Kristy.
Yeah, I knew it was the 30th, but I believe we did not take, we need to make a vote on that.
There, I don't know if we need to replay the video, there, to me, that was a very clear...
It's gotta be in the minutes.
Yeah, there's...
I'm pretty sure that the motion was, the compromise with Kristy was, it was 60 days. And, and/or if there was an agreement in place, or there was no agreement in place, that the contract would be terminated at that time.
Attorney Gavin, do we have the minutes available to look at, to read the motion out as it is on the record?
We do, if you'll give me a moment, I'm scrolling through, they're very long minutes.
But I guess my question is, one, let's just run through a couple of scenarios. One scenario is, there's an agreement, a mutual agreement comes to be, it's put before us in December, easy peasy, we're done. Let's say there's no agreement, moving forward, contract is ended, whatever the 60th day is from that time period, then the question becomes, do we either, one, consider amending the motion to continue to at least have legal representation until the RFP process is finished, or how are we going to handle the gap in services to the board?
So who would serve as point, I know that I have had conversation with Andrea Messina with FSBA, if there are individuals or firms that provide that kind of interim service or emergency service, and I was told that there are, and so if, and I hear you that there's two different options.
Yeah, I'm just trying to run the scenarios.
No, it's great, so if we wanted to, if we, if there was consensus to go with the second option, who would run point? Because we're talking, right now, we have an attorney who is handling both district and board. So right now Superintendent Moore, if a mutual agreement is not put together, I'm a little bit at a loss.
The school district would have no legal representation, that's what I'm...
So that would be up to, my understanding is we don't play in that space, right? Like Superintendent Moore will make sure that she is covered for the district. So I feel good that Superintendent Moore, in all of this, is making the right decisions for her district up through and including an interim, interim representation. As relates to this board, where Superintendent, and I'm so sorry if I said middle stat, I'm a little exhausted. It's my understanding Superintendent Moore does not play in our, in anything with the board, right, with the attorney. And so who would run point on, I know Will was gracious enough to take that on before, but what would that look like?
And he wasn't board chair, so I think the point is the RFP process. For representation for our board, it's the RFP process.
Well, but I guess, I'm so sorry, I'm referring to that interim period, so if the contract, if where the pleasure of the board lands, that as of December 31st, we would not have legal representation, and we decide we want interim representation for the board, again, I'm assuming Superintendent Moore is doing her own thing. Who would run, who of us would run point on looking into that?
Would have to be the chair.
And I think you would make that decision in December, at the December meeting.
Chairman Furry, you requested for the minutes to be read. The minutes are as follows. The motion is to allow Superintendent Moore to negotiate and come to a mutual agreement for Attorney Gavin to act as the district counsel. If an agreement cannot be reached, then termination will be 60 days. Ms. Chong stated she would agree with that. Chair Masaro stated that would be 12/31/23. Ms. Chong responded that she would second that motion.
And was there a vote?
There was a vote, and the vote was 4-1.
So, so that we don't have, in the event that there isn't an agreement met, I'd like direction from the board to at least start exploring an interim solution so that we may have something in place in case, as Dr. Conklin had mentioned, we don't want to be without legal representation for a period of time, but having an interim. And during that time, if that happens, we can evaluate the relationship of having somebody on a more hourly basis versus a full-time, and see how that's working out, if that scenario comes about, while we're deciding how we're gonna go forward permanently from the board's perspective and their representation.
Just food for thought. We just heard that the RFP process is gonna probably take February, I think, right? She said February. Right, in February. It doesn't seem to make sense to me to bring somebody brand-new in for maybe a month, two months. And I don't, have no idea if Ms. Gavin would be even, if there, if a mutual agreement was not reached, I have no idea if Ms. Gavin would even be willing to do that. But it would seem to make sense to me, financial sense, and just staying on top of everything, keep or extend until we have the RFP process completed. Because you're talking about bringing, so we'd end up having two, we'd have a new interim board attorney that we would be dealing with, and then we would have the attorney, whoever it is that we're hiring. And this all may be a mute point, because come December meeting, there may be an agreement.
Well, what I'd suggest is that we have this, it can't hurt to at least explore the availability of an attorney to fill that gap if we need it. That person may not necessarily be contracted to be our long-term attorney, they're just gonna be there.
No, I know, but can you explain to me why we would do that when we have a school board attorney right now?
Because right now, the motion stands that her termination would end in 60 days, so that's the motion on the table. So I think we should prepare for all potential outcomes at this moment for, in the event that a mutual agreement is not reached. If it is reached, and it comes back to the board and we approve it, then there's, there's no harm, no foul. But at least we have options on the table in the event that that does happen. Because as you mentioned, in light of everything, you know, Ms. Gavin may not be, may not wanna do that. So we'll, again, I can't speak for her, but I'm saying these are, all the potential outcomes are some of them, as you wanted to discuss, and I think we should prepare for those outcomes.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out what is the justification for spending $5,000 to $10,000 for an additional two months with outside counsel?
We would have that discussion, I agree with you, that discussion would be had at that, in December, because it would take a board action to move forward with it, but at least we would have options on the table of potential law firms that would step into that role, and we can debate the cost of that at that time, if, if we need to. But if, right now, the motion as it stands means, says that she would be terminated in 60 days at the end of December, so I think it's prudent for us to be prepared, if that outcome is what happens, that we should have, should cover our bases.
Right, so...
Like this could just keep going and going, so there has to be a line in the sand.
But we have to have representation.
Yes, we need representation.
And the district needs representation.
So I, I think, I feel like there is consensus that we do not wanna have a lapse in representation. And so my ask, Chair Furry, is that you would come to the December meeting with details that would, if needed, to, if needed, to have representation for an interim period.
Okay, so if we have consensus, then...
Hold on a minute, is there agreement, first of all, if we're gonna do that, what are we agreeing to financially? I mean, we, we can't just say, Will, go find a couple of interns that might be interested in filling the gap. We have to identify what cost we're willing to, give them a budget idea.
I would think that, and based on things that Chair Furry has said in the past, I believe he would go to find the, the details he would come back with would be those that present themselves as the best available to us, right, the lowest cost, whatnot. And I, I just, a point of clarification, we're not voting on this right now. I mean, I think for me, I'm literally just asking for details to be brought, if needed, to the next board meeting.
Board Chair Furry, if I could please offer some guidance. So you have, and I have to go live tonight, you have a working agenda workshop on December 5th. I realize that that's a fast turnaround time for you, Chair Furry, to have to go to FSBA or whoever, but I think that that may provide some information and guidance. I have no idea. Some guidance where you could give them an update at the working agenda workshop on the potential of the availability of an interim board attorney to be available for the January meeting, and also getting an idea of the cost for them to attend. You also could make decisions, and that would be a part of your working agenda workshop, to have a conversation of whether or not you need an attorney present for an information workshop, whether you only need it for your working agenda and business meeting, where you actually take a vote for guidance. Those kind of conversations could be had by Mr. Furry and those potential law firms for a conversation. And you'll know whether or not there are any law firms available to be present at a January start of 2024 meeting.
Well, that is basically what I've been proposing, is that it was gonna be, basically, I'm gonna go out, I'm not gonna retain anybody. I'm, what I would be doing is finding potential school board attorneys that could fill that need, if need be. It's very similar to what Chair Masaro brought up earlier, or Cheryl Masaro, I'll get used to that eventually, about having somebody by the hour and being here for the, for the board meetings. This would just be something that would, would, would fill that gap, if, if there was one. And again, it's all information, it would, I'm just gonna bring you information for you guys to, and I can't say that I'll have it all ready by the, by the 5th, but I would like to, I don't wanna drag that out. But I'll, I'll need time to, to interview. But in the last search, what happened is I called, interviewed them, asked questions about their rates and their areas of practice, and then they sent me, they sent me engagement letters which revealed their hourly rate. And in most cases, that's how it's gonna be, is on an hourly rate, with the, the last engagement with Shuts, the, we negotiated a flat fee, because it was a very specific scope, right? This would more than likely just be at, at some sort of hourly rate that we'd have to agree on. Again, this is only to have available to us if we need it at that, at that time. Based on the motion that we have on the table right now, I think it's prudent for us to be prepared if that is one of the outcomes that happens.
There's no vote on the table, right, because this is just an update.
No, no, we're just discussing.
The only thing that I would say is, and hopefully it's a mute point, it is a waste of money. It is plain and simple, a complete and total waste of money.
Well, that, that discussion can be had at the time that we decide if we need to move forward with this or not. Right now, there is no money going to be spent, it is just my time invested in getting the information. So if there's consensus from the board, I don't, I don't believe this needs a motion, does it?
Well, I would, I would not be, I'm not part of the consensus, so you only need three, obviously, I get that, but I would not be...
I kinda just restated the motion, I guess that kinda went over everybody's head, but if it's the same, you know, if that's the same understanding.
Right, but the timeline is not working out.
Here's my concern, I don't have a problem with you going out there and finding somebody or getting some prices. However, Shuts &amp; Bowen was extremely expensive hourly rate, we're at $575, that's about double, over double what the going rate is. If you, you know, I don't, I would, I would vote to support this if you could keep it $300 or less, an hour.
Yeah, that would be, with Shuts, it was different, because even though their rate, hourly rate was higher, it was because they were willing to do the flat fee for the scope. It was not intended to be a long-term engagement, right?
Right, this will be higher too, because it's not intended to be, would be a long-term engagement either. So I'm figuring 225, 250, all right, 300, that's a little extra cushion.
I think that with, you know, give or take within that range, I think that that's a palatable number for myself too. I don't, I don't believe it would be wise for us to, to, to go into and hire an attorney for ongoing at the, at the same rate of Shuts, right? So around the 300 or less range, again, this is, I'm just gonna get the information. There's no requirement to move forward with any of this information, it's just to have at our disposal.
Can I ask just a two-part question real quick, it's little. The first question, Dr. Conklin, Attorney Gavin, I don't know who can answer this, but I know someone in this room can. By state statute, by law, do, do all school boards have an attorney present for any time the board is convened? Is that, is that something that we just do, or is that something that is required?
No, I'm not aware of any board that meets without legal counsel.
So they meet with legal counsel.
Because they're also the parliamentarian of the meeting.
Particularly for business meetings. Information workshops, sometimes they're there by Zoom, they could be there live. Information workshops, y'all are taking no action, so therefore you don't have to have somebody present when there's no action being taken.
Okay, so we're talking about 12, we would have to have 12 times for our 12 annual business meetings.
Yes, ma'am, plus, plus your special meetings that you have to have, like your year-end. Again, that year-end closeout, for example, that's a 10-minute meeting, and I'm going to use the example of, I know Palm Coast, when they had a meeting, and Nasa Borger was unable to be there live, she was present by phone to respond to inquiries and questions. So it is doable, there's just always that delay when you're on by phone, because you're listening to the meeting, and there's a, a little bit of a delay that we have for purposes of, if there's inappropriate cuss words, maybe that come out, that we wanna censor, but...
For business meetings, and then I guess the second part to my question is, as finances are being discussed, I just wanted to clarify, should there not be a mutual agreement? As of January 1st, the current salary would not be paid out, and I don't know if Patty is in the room or not, but to me, this would, this would not be our current salary for a full-time attorney, and then on top of that, we are paying for an interim. This, so I, to me, the cost is not as great, because when we were, when we did the initial Shuts, that was on top of already having an in-house attorney. So if I'm not making any sense, right now, if we are paying $10,000 a month for our current attorney, we will, as of January 1st, not be paying that $10,000 salary. So part of what we would be paying for the interim, anything over $10,000, if you will, would be that incremental amount.
Right, but I guess my thing is, who is going, who is going to be watching out for all of the legal issues, contracts, everything, come January 1st?
On behalf of the district or on behalf of the school board?
Well, both, both, because at the end of the day, even though it's district, right? That's, we're still responsible.
So all counties don't have an in-house attorney, I mean, we can...
No, they, they have the firms, which are very expensive.
It's a mixed bag.
We do, we do have relationships with outside counsel for the district, so that Ms. Moore, in this scenario, once again, could also utilize those relationships in the interim as well.
The only thing, Sally, let me clarify something. In the event, December 31st, we don't have a mutual agreement, and we honor this motion, December 31st, we have to pay out her salary.
And I'm, and just to...
And that's $150,000 on top of that.
And I'm treating that separately, and just for the benefit of the public, that is information we would be, I'm sorry, I'm a little, I am really tired. That is a payment we would be making, even if Attorney Gavin decided to...
Down the road, yeah.
Whenever she decides, right, that's not the thing that she's owed as part of her contract. So I'm, I'm not really, to me, for me, I'm not lumping that in. But because we have brought up the district, I feel, I don't know if it's appropriate, but Superintendent Moore, you know, we're talking a lot about the district. I am making the assumption, as I stated earlier, that as you are working through potentially a mutual agreement, or not, that you would have a plan in place for your legal counsel, for the district, for all things contract and whatnot. Do you feel like you need to be a part of this conversation with the board? Do you feel like we need to discuss this together on the operations side of the House as well as the board? Or can we trust that for the legal, for your side of the House, you would ensure that you are covered for, to keep your district with counsel?
If we are unable to come to a mutual agreement by December 31st, there is language that would allow for me to engage with an attorney for, for the district, for any emergency cases that we have. So yes, we're always thinking about what are those, what ifs, if we do not come to a mutual agreement.
LaShaka, can I ask a question? Would you need to, because obviously it's not a current position for the district, the, if, if it was to be a district position and not a contracted service?
Yes.
Right, because it could be one or the other, for the district side I'm talking about. For the district side, it could be either an employee of the school district, right, that is a position. So that position would need to be created, it would need to be approved, I mean, there's a process. The budget line would need to be approved, whatnot. If it's a contracted service, because it's over the threshold, it would still have to come before the board for approval.
So yes, we, if it was a contracted service that we were gonna do for a long period of time, all of it will eventually come before the board, yes, all of it will eventually come before the board. But, and I'm gonna lean on Patty for this, but I wanna say, in the event of an emergency, I have a threshold to engage in legal counsel, I wanna say it's up to $50,000, but...
I think it is $50,000.
Yes.
So right now, we have the, the motion's still standing from, that was, I mean, at the last, no, I'm saying that, sorry, the, the motion that passed at the last meeting.
At the October 26th meeting.
I have one more point, though, since we're discussing everything at this point. I need to know where the just cause is, Sally. We had asked you before to present your just cause in writing, I haven't seen anything, I don't know if anyone else has.
Yeah, so maybe three quick points. One, I will kind of continue to be confused why there were three votes and the focus is on me, but I will tell you, I've been advised that at this time, I should not put anything in writing. And the other point that I will make is, it is my understanding that the motion has passed, and so this, that is really at this point, old business. So to me, this is not an... So to me, this is not an ongoing conversation. So is there consensus for us to reopen this? Because I, I'm not in favor of reopening. To me, there was discussion, there was a motion, and there was a vote. And so for me, this is.
So what I'm hearing then is, you're asking the board members to vote on termination based on just cause without seeing anything on hearsay?
The vote, Cheryl, I'm a little confused because the vote has happened.
No, see, that's where, that's where I'm confused too.
You guys are talking about two different things.
Well, let me, let me just take control of this for a moment. So right now, this conversation is about the mutual agreement. We're actually moving on, I agree, into an old business conversation, which can continue in that area. But essentially, unless there's anything more to add about the mutual agreement, I would like to add one more thing. It's, there was a question on whether I would engage with Superintendent Moore or another board member. And honestly, I don't really see the need to have a board member involved in this negotiation, being that this is a position that would be under the superintendent's direction. So I believe that Superintendent Moore is capable of continuing these negotiations on her own if she, unless she would like to have another board member involved in them.
Based on the conversations we've had, I think it's important that a board member is present. Mainly, as I sit and we have this conversation around mutual agreement, I, I am thinking about what is the financial impact to the board on both, to the school district on both sides? So what is the financial impact if we just move Attorney Gavin over? Then what does that look like? Because there's still dollars. What is the impact if it just remains the same? What is the impact if we don't do this at all? So I think that is important, in my opinion, that a board member, based on the conversations we've had, that a board member is there and present.
Also, I am willing to join you in causes. I think we all need to do that, I just don't think we're there yet.
I think part of this conversation is just premature until we get to the December meeting.
Yeah, some of it is. So let's, unless there's, I'm going to go ahead and close this out, this agenda item.
Everybody say what they need to say, because I just don't want to read if somebody's angry later.
Sure, a lot's been said and a lot of different topics here. Are we ready to move on?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Ready.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next item, which is 2201, selection of value adjustment business member and alternate.
This has been previously discussed with the board at the Working Agenda Workshop. Mr. Wright is willing to continue on in that capacity. And we did name an alternate. And so at this time, it's, we would need a motion to approve the current value adjustment board business representative and alternate.
Who's the alternate?
Chelsea Barney.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Barney Blackburn.
Yeah, I got her. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve Mr. Joe Wright as the value adjustment business member and Chelsea Blackburn as the alternate.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a second, so any discussion? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to 22.02, adoption of revisions of school board policy 306, 410, 411, 513, 519, 526, 545, 677, 803, at policy, AI policy, new policy 424, drone policy, new policy 425, and internet security, new policy 329. Presenter Kristi Gavin.
Board, you have before you a number of policies that were, again, placed for advertisement back in October, or I'm sorry, back in September. They have been brought before you again at the Working Agenda Workshop. And the one thing that I will notify you of is that we have made two adjustments primarily, and I want to go through very quickly, the two changes that were made of the policies. And those are, with respect to school board policy 411, you will see there has been a change from 15 days to 30 days for when the committees have to make their decisions. The other change is we amplified that it is a media specialist. So the word media and also certified is in there. So those are the changes to 411. And then the other change has to do with the medication management for headaches. And the language that we added in there, that the administration of medication is school board policy 526. And that specific change is that the parent or guardian must annually complete the authorization form permitting the student to carry and self-administer headache medication. So that tweak and adjustment to that policy also was made at the recommendation of staff and Superintendent Moore. Finally, as I had indicated to you previously, there are three new policies. Those are the artificial intelligence acceptance use policy. And I am recommending that that policy actually be listed as new policy 424. The drone policy, which is a new policy, would be under board policies 425. And the internet safety policy would be a new policy as 329. So those are the new numbers for those policies. Those are the only changes that have been made to those various policies. Otherwise, the policies stand as they were published in the newspaper as well as presented to the board at prior meetings.
I'm reading it, but just clarifying, it's, the headache medicine is only over the counter.
That's correct. It's the, it specifically states as written by statute, the FDA, over the counter medication. Yes, ma'am. And they would have to be in, they can't carry them in baggies, it has to be in the bottle.
We do have board, I'm sorry, district procedures that we have worked through and we will be sending out to families some educational pieces around this policy as well as how they would go about accessing that authorization form.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, discussion? Anybody have anything to say? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we've got 2203, ALJ Service Contract with DOA.
Chair Furry, board members, I presented earlier this afternoon. We received this from the Division of Administration Chief Judge. This is an amendment and an update to our contract that we have with DOA. DOA handles our 120 proceedings, which include our ESE matters. Currently, our rate has been a $185 an hour rate. That rate is being increased, it's an increase across the state. Regardless of what county you're in, the hourly rate is $200 an hour. And that is effective October 1st, 2023, it's good for one year. In addition to that, it also is clarifying that when there is an ESE matter or when student information is being uploaded and/or preserved in the database system of the DOA proceedings, that any student names or student information is redacted. We currently already are subject to doing that, but this is clarifying it in the contract. And so those are the changes to the prior contract, and I am seeking board approval on the DOA contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to move on now to old business, 2301. Any old business? Not hearing any, we'll move on to new business, 24.01.
Chair Furry, I would like to bring up something that was discussed in the workshop. Today in the workshop, leadership from Advent Health presented to us on their partnership with us and some incredible technology that is benefiting students. And so I would just like to ask my fellow board members, it seemed like there was interest in making the heart screening a mandatory process for our student athletes.
We already said that during the board.
Yeah, so I guess my, so my question is, as far, I just, I want to be better about going beyond discussion and moving to action.
Well, I think the direction at the workshop was to bring back a policy for us to approve or consider.
So, so I just wanted to check timeline on that. So because we're just right up against coming up to second semester. And so I just wanted to check, is this something that we are wanting to try to accomplish? Not really till next school year?
So Ms. Hunt, if I, if I could.
Please.
Dr. Conklin. So if I can get, and I will go ahead and look, there are a couple districts in the South that have already approved this policy, I'll look for those. I also have Eric is going to be sending, Mr. Neeson is going to be sending me his draft policy that he had prepared for Volusia County, and I will take a look at that along with the others and craft something together. It will be available for your consideration. It probably won't be on the Working Agenda Workshop, since I have to go live with that tonight, but my anticipation would be that I could have something present for the December Information Workshop for advertisement purposes, that you then would approve at that night meeting for advertisement purposes. It would sit out for 30 days. And what it would allow is that if that gets approved, as you saw from their presentation, the next time that you would be having screenings of our athletes where they're being provided that free service by Advent Health, it's in May. And so it would time with May being.
So that's in May anyway?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, perfect. Thank you.
Any, any other new business? Okay, we're not hearing any, we'll move on to public comment. Gavin?
The first speaker is Elizabeth Diaz, and she is on due process.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Moore. Members of the board were elected on the premise of improving our schools and elevating the culture and climate of Flagler. The recent actions of the school board are exasperating the challenges in our educational landscape and that educational leaders coin as VUCA, volatile, uncertain, complex, and ambiguous. The decisions to terminate Ms. Gavin without citing just cause sends a message to our employees and undermines every contract in place, contracts that serve to protect both sides. This volatility erodes trust and confidence in the predictability and stability of our, of the leaders that you are. The uncertainty and complexity of the situation is evident in the conflicting messages sent by the board of prioritizing fiscal responsibility while risking fiscal instability with potential costly legal battles. Additionally, many employees are now questioning who will be the next target and fear for their own job security. Recognizing the principles of just cause and due process in all contracts becomes imperative in this context. Upholding these principles ensures that employees, employment decisions and terminations and discipline adhere to clear and consistent processes promoting fairness and accountability. The ambiguity introduced by decisions that deviate from established principles of due process contribute to an environment where rules and engagement become unclear. Some members of our board have acted as judge, jury, and executor. I must further caution certain members of the board that comments regarding discipline of teachers and citing board policy and potential statute violations is itself, in itself, a violation of due process proceedings and the ability of an employee to have a fair investigation. The board must not interfere with employee discipline. Continued actions and actions such as these result in unfair labor practice proceedings. In an ever-changing educational environment, we must abide by the principles of just cause and due process. It is not an ask. It is crucial for establishing a balanced and equitable framework that fosters stability and fairness. Transparency is the only way that we achieve the greatness that we need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Constance Soward, Indian Trails Middle School Art.
Superintendent Moore, members of the board, I've taught for 41 years plus. And I received emails today expressing great concern over the way the incident at Indian Trails was being considered by the board as something actionable. I hope that's not the case, because I have to echo concerns with due process. I was an art-infused educator. I'm also further not only a fellow educator of the teacher in question, but a friend. And I'm fully aware of the lesson and the fact that the student-created product that is coming into question had nothing at all to do with certain laws that have been held up by the state of Florida. The assignment was to come up with a design that reflected hope in human existence, hope in humanity. The students came up with hands, a beautiful butterfly, and being caught colors, that was there too. And the project was lauded and supported as good art. And one student came to question the color scheme. Can you hold a prism up? And expecting to, in a physics class, explain the bending of light in a prism into a rainbow? Or is that now illegal to do? Can you teach color theory without expanding and explaining that? We're getting into real, I wore black tonight because it's not black and white, it's tertiary. I beg you to leave this situation alone. It is a matter of instruction, and the person who complained about it is way off base. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
I can interject for a second. I think there's a lot of gossip and hearsay out there, and some of it we don't even know about. So I'm sure our superintendent is handling things, but the entire board does not know what's going on.
Save those for, for public comment at the end. Next speaker?
Jennifer Valet, I'm not sure.
Good evening. There's a few things that I wanted to discuss. One thing that's been discussed already is the teacher in question, the art teacher. I don't believe that the school board policy 509 or 508, I don't believe the item in question is advertisement, so I don't believe that covers that at all. I also don't think HB 1069 would cover this, because if it's something that she has on her desk, she or he, I don't know, they have on their desk. I don't see it as class instruction, although it seems like it was a student who created this. So then that does change it, still doesn't mean HB 1069 would have anything to do here. So I just want to also agree with what was just said beforehand, that I don't think the teacher has done anything wrong, and I don't think. teacher has done anything wrong, and I don't think they should be attacked or villainized. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is what are we doing in regards to bullying? There was an incident where a child brought a knife to school, and I believe that's going to be dealt with today as well. But are we getting to what caused that child to do that? And are we handing out consequences to those children as well? Because this keeps happening, and we keep, you know, throwing the child that brought the weapon or made the threats, you know, get rid of them, they're bad news. But what pushed them to this, to do these things? And I don't feel like that's being dealt with enough. Maybe it is, you know, we don't know, but I would like to know if that is being dealt with. And then the other thing I want to bring up is in regards to Ms. Gavin, I think we do deserve to know what the just cause is. I know we had coffee once back in February when the whole middle set thing first happened, and so I know firsthand that some of the reasons, but I think it would only be fair that everybody be made aware of that. So if that conversation was had with me and it's been had with other people, it should be had here where everyone can hear what the just cause is. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Dan Scollan.
Hello, Board. Listen, I wanted to start off by making a few comments. I apologize for my appearance. I just came from work. I would have liked to have made that informational workshop meeting earlier. I, I heard there were a few things discussed. I got the lowdown from a few people that I had sitting in on the meeting. I, first of all, I want to say you guys deal with a lot. I wouldn't want your job. I mean, you guys have a lot on your plate, and it sounds, you know, overwhelming, but I wouldn't be bringing this to you again if I didn't feel it was important and I didn't know stories from students and teachers who are afraid to come forward because of fear of retribution from what they might, what they would say. Anyway, I just wanted to read, I'm here specifically talking about the cell phone tower placement at FPC, and I wanted to read a student testimonial and talk a little bit about, but before I do, I wanted to talk a little bit about the FCC guidelines. So you guys are having a third party come to tell you whether or not the tower at FPC is under compliance for FCC regulatory guidelines on safe limit, safety limit exposure to radio frequency radiation. I can save you sixty-three hundred bucks and tell you that they are going to say yes, it is under those limits, but what I can tell you is those guidelines were created in nineteen ninety-six, and they are well outdated. They were also bought and paid for, but they are well outdated. They ignored a whole body of research done by the U.S. Navy Office of Medical Research in nineteen seventy-one that had thirty-seven hundred references and maybe more citations in total, talking about how non-ionizing, for those of you who don't know, non-ionizing is the radiation that comes from your cell phone, that comes from the towers. It's, they say the, the regulatory guidelines were non-ionizing radiation was safe. It's not safe. They said it's safe because it doesn't heat tissue. It does heat tissue in time. All of the research is out there, but you can't just do cursory Google searches on this because you're going to find what's going to populate in your search are a bunch of government bodies that are going to come forward and tell you that it's safe. They're just going to parrot the FCC's take on this. Nineteen ninety-six, the Environmental Health Trust Group took them to court, won a decision to say that to uphold those nineteen ninety-six guidelines, they did this in two thousand nineteen, was capricious and arbitrary, that they ignored all of the medical evidence coming forward since then. It's kind of crazy that I only have three minutes to speak, but there is a student who gave me her testimony who says that she specifically, she specifically has health effects, including headaches. It's interesting that you have to have provisionalary language because so many people, so many students at school carry around headache medication. When I was a kid in school, I don't have my finger on the pulse, I don't have my finger on the pulse of this information, so I don't know that this is the case, but when I was a kid, the incidences of headaches were far below the endemic rates today.
In fairness to the others that want to speak, I'm going to have to ask you to please conclude.
Okay, 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 fifteen seconds. So there is a student.
Sir, I can't give you any more time. We, we need to keep moving this meeting along.
Teachers are afraid to speak out on this issue. Students too.
Thank you for your comments, sir. If you'd like to share a little bit more, I'll, I'll stay after if you want to share. Thank you.
Chair Furry, the next speaker is Randy S. I'm not sure if that's Randy Scollan or not. It just says Randy S. S as in Sam? That is how it's listed? Uh-oh, are you Randy Stroud? There we go, okay.
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
The one to the, the other side.
How about that?
That's great, thank you.
We'll try this again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The reason I'm up here is something to do kind of on the periphery with the, with the seven, with the five G issue. First off, I'd like to say that my wife and I are absolutely thrilled with our daughter's experience at FPC over the past three and a half years. So we're here to, first off, make our main point before I get into anything else, is that our daughter's experience has been phenomenal. She's in the IB program, she's thrived there, she is, at this point in time, doing her college hunt, and she is being accepted in university after university, and she's got about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of scholarships so far that she's got. And we are absolutely ecstatic over what she's accomplished, and we give full credit to FPC and to the IB program. That, that being said, the issue that we have is that over the past two years, probably six to eight times a month, our daughter is having moderate to severe headaches at school. And of course, we have texting. Now, when I was at school, we couldn't communicate with our parents, but now I get the play-by-play sometimes. And often it's, I have a headache, I'm nauseated, can I come home? And this is a child that wants to go to school, that wants to learn, that's enthusiastic. A lot of times, sometimes when she gets nauseated, we bring her home early or let her come home early. Too often, we have to tell her, hang in there a couple more hours till the day's done. You need to stay, we don't want to mess up your attendance record. This is a very painful thing. We don't know what's causing it. We have obviously taken her to doctors, the pediatrician, the ophthalmologist, the neurologist. The good news is they can't find anything. The bad news is they can't find anything. So here we are. Is it the five G program? Is it the five G towers in the back? I don't know. I'm a retired naval officer, okay? I'm not an electronics guy, though. I'm just a terrorism guy. I don't know what capabilities or what, what problems result from these type of, this type of radiation. I don't know what all, but I understand, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that the IB program, the IB buildings are toward the back where these towers are located. If I'm wrong, somebody please make me smart. I don't mind being corrected when I make a mistake. At this point in time, I guess what I want to know, what I'd like is to see how many other children, how many other teachers are having these types of issues? Because if this is not an isolated incident, if this is something that is somewhat systematic, then that's an indicator, if not evidence, that this five G may be an issue. And we appreciate any and all efforts on this to resolve this. By the time this gets resolved, I'm sure my daughter will be out of school and on her way, but this is for the, for the future. And thank y'all for, for listening to me. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to respond.
Thank you.
All right, have a night.
Chair Furry, that concludes public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. It did not go through, but come on forward. I apologize. If you could please state your name and.
My name's Jessica Matthews, and I really don't have anything planned because I just got home from work. I had a run with my daughter to go get stuff for class, came home, I had to log on to my own classes, that finished, and I pulled up the link to this meeting, and again, we're talking about firing the, the School Board attorney. First of all, let me premise, I do not know her whatsoever, but the fact that you guys are wasting the money and trying to fire her is completely unreasonable. You can't give cause. You refuse to give cause, and it's inappropriate. We just got done with Thanksgiving, it's about to be Christmas, and you're talking about frickin' firing her. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Instead of sitting here and worrying about this woman who's done her job for seventeen years, why don't you figure out what's wrong with the schools? And maybe buy planners for kids who don't know how to be organized because some parents can't afford it. I buy my kid a planner because she's completely unorganized, because she doesn't know proper study habits, because these kids got sent home from COVID, and when they came back, they never really got, really got homework, they never really learned study habits, and it's a mess. I can buy my kid all the resources that she needs, but some parents can't. We have amazing teachers, amazing bus drivers, and the teachers are leaving, the bus drivers are leaving. My daughter's had two bus drivers so far this year. She's had two teachers quit this year. What are you doing about the stuff that we elected you to do? Because right now, all you're concentrating on is her, and I'm sick of it. I'm absolutely sick of it. You're not doing your damn job. You're not doing anything benefiting these kids, and all you're doing is worrying about one person that has nothing, she has done nothing. Get it together. This is an embarrassment, and honestly, I am so frickin' tired of it. You're wasting our money, you're wasting resources, you're wasting time on things that are not relevant, and you're not helping a single child. Figure it out.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any more comments for this evening? Anyone would like to come forward? Okay, not seeing anybody approach. We'll close out public comment and move on to closing comments. Board members and superintendent.
So Metansus has had a very eventful November, so it's college season right now, as everyone knows. So we've been doing college trips to UNF as well as an upcoming trip to UF tomorrow to try to provide our students with an onlook of college and what campuses they want to go to. We recently had forty-five students visit the Florida Classic Football Game to get the college experience of what a football game looks like. Our cross-country girls went to States along with one boy recently, and an MHS student, her name is Alexandra Gazoli, she finished fourth in the state golfing championship and signed with Florida State University recently, so that's very great. Our volleyball team recently, actually this year, has the most wins in school history, and our varsity football team made it to the playoffs, which is great. So recently, another event that we had was the Blue Steel Dinner and Concert on November sixteenth. So our blue steel drum, steel drums played music, our culinary program provided food for two-hundred-plus people, and our hospitality class helped with serving. So this was a joint fundraiser for all three of these programs, and it's great to see the turnout for it and how these programs can work together. The Kiwanis Club presented our first three seniors of the month earlier in November. Carly Hires, Austin Weeks, and Sierra Gordon were all recognized. And our Metansus High School Band will be performing in the upcoming Flagler Beach Christmas Parade December second. So since it is winter, girls and boys soccer, basketball, weightlifting, and wrestling will all start up soon, or they've already started already, depending on. Recently, our JRTC attended the Veterans Day Parade in Benel, and they also helped with recognition ceremonies, visiting a local retirement community to honor our local veterans. They also recognize the veterans and our faculty at Metansus. And last, two weeks ago, our National Honor Society helped with the Festive Gobble Basket Distribution to paraprofessionals in our communities, which is a very amazing thing to see going on in Flagler County. And on a personal note, I finished my Eagle Scout project last week. It was at the Flagler Humane Society. We built two eight-by-ten lean-to kind of pavilions in the back, so if you're interested in adopting an animal, they have many over there, so thank you.
So, real quick, FPC students are also attending the UNF and UF tours as well as they are with the Flagler Education Foundation, and I would like to quickly recognize and congratulate the Flagler Palm Coast Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams for competing at the recent state meet, as well as our talented thespians and tech theater students for any superiors in the District Three Festival. And I would also like to congratulate our chorus for performing at Epcot for one of the recent holidays. Looking forward, we also have several exciting December events, especially on December fifth, where we have our Holiday Extravaganza Concert with both our band and chorus at the Flagler Art Orym for ten dollars. And then on December seventh, Vitale Middle School, Benel and Mentor School, and FPC High School will team together to have a literacy game night at the George Washington Carver Center Gym from five to seven. It's, the event aims to be educational and fun with a lot of literacy trivia games and other activities to help promote literacy. And on the thirteenth, the FPC SGA will have our annual dinner with Santa in the FPC cafeteria, five dollars for adults and three dollars for children three and under as a holiday event and fundraiser. And furthermore, on December sixteenth, we'll be having our own school cleanup to help clean our schools clean for the upcoming holidays. And tomorrow, we will have our second Teen Town Hall from seven-thirty to eight-thirty regarding student engagement and campus culture for any students interested. So any last-minute sign-ups or anything, please send them our way. All active participants will receive five free service hours as a reminder, and yeah, thank you and good night.
I just want to say, Jason Wheeler, Wheeler, Wheeler. I don't know when your last day is just yet, but I wanted to publicly thank you for all that you've done for the district, for leading our communications, for being the voice of our school district. It's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you all of these years. You will be missed, and we wish you well in your next venture and your next chapter, but we'll miss you and Shelley very, very much. In addition, I just share a little good news. I saw the announcement too from Jason about the Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year, and want to congratulate Jessica DeFour and Sarah Novak on being named Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. Well deserved there. It was very nice to see the veterans in the classroom program revitalized and kind of brought back. The number of students that were impacted by that program was pretty impressive. I think, if I recall, she said over two thousand students. I think it's critical that our students hear from our veterans, and those stories are, are shared. I think there, it's just incredibly important because then we'll repeat history, and we don't want to do that. I'm very curious about the whole cell tower thing. I, I think it's, I'm going to do a little bit of digging about the nineteen ninety-six, the FCC guidelines. I'm surprised we're, we're looking at, yeah, so I'm kind of curious about that. But congratulations, Will, on your chairmanship, and Kristy on the vice chair, and look forward to moving forward, Flagler forward.
Okay, first of all, I want to personally thank both Brandon and Stanley for doing a super job at the first virtual Teen Town Hall, which was concerning vaping and the dangerous effects of fentanyl. We had a great group of kids, and this concept's beginning to catch on statewide. So we've started something good here that I think is going to help a lot of students. The one tomorrow is certainly school culture and climate, but it's going to deal a lot with bullying, and I know everybody keeps saying, what are you doing about bullying? We're doing as much as we can, you know, and I think we're going to keep having to do it because it's obviously not getting resolved, and it's been a, a problem as long as I can remember in education. It just never goes away. It flares up, sometimes a lot worse than others, but don't think that nothing's being done because it really is. At every avenue, we have a chance to, and I know these guys are going to do another good job with our students who have super suggestions and ways to address things, and every time we, we meet, we come up with something new that's going to positively affect our community. So I'm, I'm really excited about where these virtual Teen Town Halls are going. I too am very delighted to see that the veterans are being back in the program again, and it's, it's rolling. We need that history. We need that history. Without that history, we lose so much, you know, and we, the kids today, they don't know what war is about. My era knows a lot more about war. So I think we just have to keep going and understand the value that our veterans do and give to our country. And our ROTC programs are awesome, and I hope a lot more kids get involved in that because it really is spectacular what they accomplish. I have to give a shout out to one of our all-star employees, and that's Keisha Ayers-White. Ms. White, would you stand up, please, since you're here this evening? Keisha coordinates the gobble festival giveaway for all of our staff for Fespa. And they gave out fifty-plus baskets this year to employ, how many? Seventy? Wow, it came up, okay. You know, and I can't thank you more because you're giving it to the people that really help us all the time, and I really appreciate all that you do, and it's a great thing that Fespa's involved in. And you've started it from scratch, and you're getting better and bigger, and more people are being served. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. And finally, I just want to say that my term as chair was probably one of the most tumultuous terms in the history of the school board. If you look at things that transpired since a year ago, it is unbelievable. And they're not necessarily all positive things. I hope they turn out to be positive. That's our goal. We want it to be positive. So I look forward to working this year to help Chair Furry and Vice Chair Chong to not have the same kind of year that I have and have a much better year because we need to move Flagler forward, and that's our goal with Ms. Moore at the helm, and keep us focused on what's important to this community, and that's giving the best education we can to our children and their families. So with that, I will end.
And Cheryl, I'm sorry, I didn't thank you for your service. So thank you for your services, Chair.
I'm going to just, I'm going to share with everybody, and I don't mean to make an excuse. My mom was in the hospital for a straight fifteen days and we almost lost her. And I'm really just at a point of exhaustion tonight. It's just been, it's been a long, many days. I have so many things that I would just, I would love to communicate, to you, Liz, to you, Jennifer. There's so much that I could share tonight. I just honestly, I don't have the capacity. But I, I just want you to know, I share in the thought of helping our students succeed. I, I think that if you watched video clips of workshops, and not just the board meetings, but workshops, I think that you, if you listen to what comes out of my mouth, Kristi, Will, it is all-around continuous improvement and student success. And I don't know how to convince, I don't know how to convince people otherwise. Chair Furry, I look forward to you leading the board. I hope that going forward, this can be a functioning board. Right now, I am not able to be as transparent as I would like to be during these meetings because, and I don't want to be, I don't want to cause drama, but it's a bit of a hostile work environment for me, and I don't know always how to navigate that. That's not one of my skill sets. I come from more of a collaborative background where people work together professionally. And so I hope that that is this board going forward. Thank you all for coming tonight. Good night.
I don't have much tonight, but I will just say thank you to our veterans for investing in our students. We really appreciate you. I know that our veterans have fought in a way that our generation has not had to as of lately, and I hope that we will not have to. And so we just really appreciate you being able to come out and teach our students and give them some history. And I'll also say congrats to Principal DeFord and Mrs. Sarah Novak on being Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year. Congratulations. As far as rumors and gossip, I just kind of want to reel that in a little bit. I know a lot of things flow on social media and Facebook, and I even have to be careful. I can make one comment on Facebook and it can start a fury, so just, you know, just be careful what you're hearing out there. Not everything is always true. Thank you, Cheryl and Colleen, for serving as Chair and Vice Chair this past year. I know we don't always agree, but you have taught us and we appreciate just being able to learn from your example. And thank you for trusting us as well for your election. You know, despite what anybody thinks, I really do care about being here and want to be here and hope to be able to serve. I plan to serve out my term, hopefully another, and I'm just, I'm thankful to be here, so thank you.
So thank you all for your comments. I just also want to thank the veterans as well. It's important for our students to know the importance of serving, especially at that high level, but it starts, there's so many levels of ways to serve, and we're so grateful for those that join our military. But that type of leadership also promotes serving in the community, serving at your school. There's lots of examples that can be learned through their participation, and so I'm just grateful for them. I just want to also thank Stanley and Brendan for your engagement. I really enjoy hearing your updates at these meetings, and so thank you for your professionalism and bringing good insights. I also want to thank Cheryl Masaro, I had to, I could finally drop the chair, I was getting hard to do that, but, and Colleen Conklin for serving us this year. It is a lot of extra work that you take on, and I want you to know that I appreciate it. And I just want to thank the board for putting your trust in me to lead us forward through this next year. And although we have had spirited debate and we don't always agree on everything, I want you to know that I do have a high level of respect for every single one of you, for your professionalism and for your presence, and some of you for your, for your time in and the knowledge that you've shared. So truly grateful for that. And I would say, again, although we have not always agreed, we have accomplished a lot in a year, in this year, and we've taken on some big tasks, although again, maybe they were not, they didn't come out in the outcome that some wanted. We took on some big tasks. And so my hope is this year that we can, can work together, any differences we have, we can mend. And I look forward to serving alongside Superintendent Moore and encouraging, guiding, and making sure you have all the tools you need to move Flagler forward. Also want to thank the commenters tonight. Again, we do appreciate your input, and thank you for waiting it out to share your items tonight that were not on the agenda. So with that said, I will adjourn this meeting. Oh, my apologies, rookie mistake, so Ms. Moore, please.
It is the seventieth day of school, yes. So we are so excited, and every time I come before you, I will share what day it is, and I'm not counting to the end, but really changing our mindset to celebrate each day as an individual day and an individual opportunity for us to do great things for our students. And so I want to say happy seventieth day of school. The eightieth day of school is on December twelfth, and if you haven't already guessed from my appearance, we will be celebrating that too. We will celebrate the decades, the decades as we move into the hundredth day of school. Three things that we have talked a lot about and I have stressed even when I came in as the interim is the need for standard operating procedures for this organization so that our employees can work in an environment that they know, they know what the expectations are, as well as to really reengage with our community. I think the vets in the classroom bringing that back and really ensuring that that goes to all of our schools, that is just one of those things, the tours that we're doing. And then the focus on academics. And this is my promise to you as a board and to this community, to our faculty and staff, that from now until the foreseeable future, every time I have an opportunity to give an update on the strategic plan, it will be based on academic performance. It will really highlight the root of the work that we do every day. We have amazing faculty and staff that are working every day to improve the academic performance for our students. And so I want to take a moment to read our vision because this is something I continue to remind our senior-level staff of and our principals of because this vision is so important to me. And our vision says, "As a courageous, innovative leader in education, Flagler Schools will be the nation's premier learning organization where all students graduate as socially responsible citizens with the skills necessary to reach their maximum potential." And so when I sit with our staff, my question to them is always, is this premier? And I believe in order for us to be the nation's premier learning organization, we have to first be Flagler's premier learning organization. And so I just continue to challenge our faculty, our staff, this board, that we filter all that we do through our vision of being the nation's premier learning organization. The things that we do, the decisions that we make, the way that we engage, all of those things are those things premier. And I continue to engage our staff with that, and I will continue to bring that forward to you as well. When we talk about Flagler Forward, Flagler Forward is to accomplish the mission and vision that is established. I didn't create it. We voted and approved it a long time ago, but I want to go back to what our guiding principles are, and I will close on this. I also want to say thank you to Jason Wheeler. Thank you for all of your hard work. I'm sure, you know, this next transition for you, you may be a little bit nervous, but we know that you'll do well, so thank you. Our guiding principles, children first, trust and respect for all, empower others, teamwork, excellence, quality, and consistency, commitment to individual needs, and get to yes. That is what Flagler Forward is about, and that is what's going to help us be the nation's premier learning organization and Flagler County's premier learning organization. Have a good night.